We are ready to start our work session for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. And the item that we have on our agenda is just reviewing recommendations for the OIR group, CPRB, and the police preliminary plan, which is a part of IP3. And I wanted to just let us know that we have 88 items that we have to kind of talk about. I did appreciate staff going through and kind of color coding some things for us. And so there, I'm going to call it teal and tan. So teal is what the staff went through and would be recommended that we kind of get, take some action now. And then the tan is more actionable items needed in the future. I think as we go through this, we're just gonna, I think we just have to be communicative with each other, just to let us know how, you know, what our thoughts are, but I would caution us not to get too much in the weeds or to make maybe some judgment calls. I think it's really to organize and to try to figure out how we can move forward in the future. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, our city manager.
Thanks, Mayor. So again, I agree with what Mayor Teague just said. It's not realistic that we're going to be able to spend time debating 88 different recommendations tonight, but there does need to be some organization to them, some prioritization, if you will. So staff did provide the sheets that are in your packet. We color coded them. We kind of provided some guidance to you, but you know, to be clear, these are recommendations to you from outside groups, with the exception of the preliminary plan. So you should look at those with a critical eye. You may disagree with how staff characterize them or what our suggestions may be. That was done solely to try to help you through this organizational process. What I would suggest for tonight is that we start with the community police review board recommendations and then move to OAR, O-I-R, sorry. And you know, depending on how you're feeling, if you want to continue to go through to the preliminary plan, we can do that. Otherwise, we can hold that for another session down the road. But I do believe the CPRB recommendations and O-I-R recommendations are most critical at this time to get some feedback on, at least get us working in those. What I would suggest is that, you know, if it's very clear that council wants a certain direction, that you make that known. Otherwise, we can kind of categorize these as staff go ahead and initiate work on these items or, you know, place, maybe place a topic or a group of topics on a pending list that we can schedule for a future work session where you can get a little bit more detailed in your discussion on these. If that sounds okay, then I think we can start with CPRB and work through those 13 recommendations first. Okay, and we do have the spreadsheets available that Kelly can screen share if you prefer. I don't know if you all have those in front of you or not, or if you prefer to see each other while you're interacting. But what's the, is there some folks that would like to see those up on the screen as we work through them? Do you all, you all have this? Okay, so maybe I'll just read them. I can just read the recommendations. That way the public can hear them too, and then we can go from there. So recommendation number one is in instances of sustained misconduct complaint, the board should be given information about the corresponding discipline and be allowed to include in the board report whether the board finds the discipline reasonable and fair. Our recommendation on this one is that you pursue some legal review before making comments on that. And you can choose to ask city attorney's office to do that or if you prefer, you know, some other mechanism to getting legal opinion, you can certainly go that route too.
I would like to see us get the legal review on any of these where that's recommended, and I'm very comfortable with having the city attorney's office do that.
Jeff, would the concerns be the confidentiality to those involved?
Yeah, Eleanor, do you want to talk about the nature of the legal review?
No, it's not a question of confidentiality. At this stage, there may be issues that are part of the legal review. But I mean, just to remind you, I think you would, you would hope that you would get some of that analysis from the CPRB's independent counsel, and they chose not to provide that. And so we have to get the legal review sometime. I'm certainly willing to do that, or you would have to look at hiring outside counsel to do that.
So is there consensus to get legal review from city attorney's office on that before council takes it up? And then once that legal review is done, we would schedule work session time? Okay.
I wonder if it might be helpful if we actually had all the items posted as we're going through. Instead of you reading each one, we may be able to kind of go through a few a little quicker. Some are overlapping, maybe not so much here, but in other areas, they're overlapping.
Okay, yep, Kelly's got those on the screen now. So the first three, the staff would recommend you get legal review before you take these topics up. The second one deals with the city council holding a disciplinary hearing when there's a discrepancy between the board and either the police chief or city manager. And then third is that there be discipline if an officer chooses not to comply with a board investigation process. So again, with those two, we'd recommend legal analysis before you start your conversations on those.
And just to frame up what we're doing with the legal review, the intention is to figure out if we currently would have the authority even to implement that or if there are some changes to whether it's our ordinance or state law even that would be required in order to implement that. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Item number four, and if you don't have it in front of you, remember that the CPRB just didn't give you 13 recommendations without any background to. You should have access to their full memo to you that has all the rationale. We simply didn't include that with this one. Number four is a recommendation that the complainant should have the right to respond to the chief's findings before the board conducts the, you know, their analysis. And we don't object to that. And as the board noted in their more detailed analysis, there's a rationale then to allow the police chief to respond to any concerns then the complainant brings up as well. And we would, we would think that that would be fair in the process. CPRB acknowledged that this is going to stretch out the complaint process potentially, you know, by several weeks. And I think that's clear when you offer this, but staff does not object to it. So, and there's no legal review needed in this situation. So if you know that this is something you support now, then you can just direct us and we can put that on the list of things to do in terms of updating the CPRB ordinance. Otherwise, we can schedule it for a work session if you want to have a more robust discussion on.
Yeah, I don't see any issues here.
Yeah, I think this is reasonable. It was good, would be good to include.
Yes, I agree.
So this will not move to work session. This will move to an ordinance amendment, and you'll see that at a future formal meeting. Okay, number five is another one in which we believe legal review is needed. This is an online database of officer complaints so that the public could search a complaint history on a, on a particular officer or analyze trends. Again, we'd suggest legal review is needed.
I'm comfortable with legal review and just waiting to see what they say.
Agreed.
Agree.
Agreed. Okay, number six is that a copy of all complaints of misconduct shall be included in the police department's monthly disclosures to the CPRB. We currently disclose those on a quarterly basis. And we do not have a problem moving to monthly disclosures. So if you're not familiar, obviously, a person can issue their complaint with the CPRB, but they're not required to. They can bring that complaint directly to the police department, and our supervisory staff would investigate that. So this is basically just information sharing back and forth on internal complaints that we would get. And again, we don't have a problem sharing those on a monthly basis. With a couple of these, one things, one of the things we noted is that, you know, it's, in my view, probably a good thing to not only share where we're getting complaints, but we get a lot of compliments on our service too. And I think it's important that that exchange happen as well. We can talk to the CPRB if that's of interest, but I think, I personally think that would be a good idea. So with this one, no legal reviews needed, no ordinance change is needed. If you're comfortable with it, staff will go ahead and reach out to the CPRB and figure out the best way to report that to their comfortable level.
It's fine.
Yeah, I'm comfortable. I think the idea of including the compliments along with the criticisms is just good for the public to have a little bit better idea of the broader scope of input that we get on our police department.
I agree.
Okay, number seven is just a request for additional information on our, on the quarterly reports that we issued to the CPRB. They gave examples of number of detained individuals, demographics of the detained individuals, total number arrested, et cetera. We're happy to provide whatever information we can. It's not obviously protected by any kind of confidentiality laws, and we think we can do this. We probably need to have a discussion with the CPRB first, just to make sure that we're understanding exactly what they want here. And then we probably have some suggestions on other data that might be helpful to them as well. So as you know, we've got into this with traffic stop discussions, you know, instances where there's a warrant and basically the officer discretion is taken away versus charges that involve officer discretion. I think that's going to be important to distinguish here. So again, no legal reviews needed, no ordinance change is needed. Assuming you're comfortable, we'll just proceed ahead and update our reporting mechanisms to CPRB.
I'm seeing majority shaking of it, maybe?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay, the next one gets at the ability to hire an independent auditor every couple of years to review our internal investigations. We do this already through our accreditation process, and we don't object to another third party coming in and doing that. That probably will require an ordinance change. And that's another one where we can skip right to an ordinance change or if you want to better understand what that audit looks like and have a discussion on that, we can schedule it for a work session.
I think understanding what the current audit looks like would be helpful potentially, not only for counselors, but for the CPRB board, for them to understand that. And then I would say maybe take that to them. And then if, if that's acceptable to them, then this item, we won't have to discuss any further. But if it isn't, then you can bring it back to council. That would be my suggestion.
The other suggestion that I would have is that it's maybe a concrete every two years, no more frequently than every two years unless there is some, there's the wording at the end, immediate procedural issue. If there is some specific issue that comes up that they're questioning a procedure that they, you know, could potentially figure out a way that they would have the authority to do that. But I think if you just, if we just kind of said it like, okay, this would be in every other thing unless there's some major issue, and I don't know how you write that language, that would, they would be allowed to do it more frequently.
I agree with Susan.
Okay, I think we can work with that. Chief listens on this call too, so chief, jump in anytime on these if you, if you think you can add something. We'd probably want to try to, if there's going to be a regular audit done by the CPRB, my guess is we'd probably want to stagger that with the accreditation process because those are pretty labor intensive from our standpoint, just in terms of helping those auditors out. And I'm not sure we'd want to be doing two at one time, but those are some things we can talk to with the CPRB.
And of course, chief, jump right in there. I did have a, you know, looking at this internal investigation procedure for an immediate procedural issue. So some, I mean, I just wonder instances when the CPRB thought that would come up. Could this be when, you know, something wasn't sustained that they, it wasn't sustained because the, the chief cited different, you know, from what they concluded? So does anyone have any thoughts on examples of when this might come up?
I think the examples cited in the CPRB report to you were, were those that are done on a more, let's say, regular basis. They weren't, at least to my recollection, citing kind of procedural issues that would trigger it. It was more just, hey, every two years, it's good to have a third party come in and make sure that we're above board when it comes to processing those internal investigations. And again, that's something we're used to and we welcome.
Okay, and that's what I thought I understood it. It was more, something more routine. And again, they may not be aware of what's already taking place. But yeah.
Okay, we'll keep moving with number nine. They're requesting a budget to do more outreach. They also have some specific examples of things they'd like to do, including printing the CPRB information on officer cards and things of that nature. We support this recommendation. We can amend the budget this current fiscal year if they have plans. Otherwise, we can amend it for fiscal year '22 and provide them some outreach funding. I think what we would probably do, if you're supportive of this, is go back to the CPR, CPRB and ask them to put together a promotional budget or an outreach budget and then allow them to kind of figure out what it is they think would be effective. And then we'll consider their budget request at that time.
I was glad to see that streaming their meetings is included in this. I mean, I'm a, I think we should be streaming as many or all of the board and commission meetings as we can in as many places as we can. So I hope that that can be prioritized as well.
Yeah, I think that can be wrapped into the budget. We can, we can give them some analysis on any kind of staff cost that may be needed. And we can either factor that into our existing communications budget or they can include it in their budget proposal.
The only question I had with that is when we're so protected information and when you're live streaming a meeting, someone may say something that they probably, you know, isn't, isn't allowable for the public.
There's large sections of the, Mr. Mayor, there's large sections of the CPRB meetings that are an executive session whenever they're dealing with one of the complaint or anything. That's something that, that even if one of us are in a meeting, we have to leave. We can't hear it either.
Okay, all right. So thanks for that.
Okay, number 10 is a recommendation that the city provide complainants access to a lawyer and a social worker, medical professional to help them through that process. We would suggest some legal review be done on this, particularly, you know, in an instance where the city is hiring a lawyer that could end up in that suit being brought against the city or our employees. Probably need to think through that a little bit. We don't have issue with access to social workers or medical professionals. And I think those arrangements could be made. Obviously, there's some funding that's going to have to be provided to support that effort. But if council is comfortable or would like to know more, we can kind of wrap that into the budget proposal. So this could be kind of a two-pronged approach. We can do the legal review on the attorney side and then have them tell us what, you know, give us some more detail on what they're thinking and propose cost on the, on the social worker side. Getting some head nods there, okay?
I'm comfortable.
All right, 11 is expanding membership of the CPRB from five to seven or nine with an emphasis on minority representation and a law enforcement or police policy expert. This would require an ordinance change and probably warrants some discussion. I think staff would have a hard time preparing that ordinance change without some more discussion from council.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I think that the promise of this one is good and whatever additional discussion we need to have to do it.
I agree also, and I have no objection to increasing their membership numbers.
I agree as well.
All right, number 12 is, deals with anonymous complaints or third-party complaints when someone has personal knowledge of the incident. We understand, I think, what the, what the CPR is looking at here. But also, I think everybody needs to understand if we can't speak to the complainant and understand that, that it may be hard to fully investigate the situation. So I think that's a, that's a complicating factor there. And, you know, each situation is going to be a little bit different. But obviously, you know, in all these cases, we like to, we like to talk to the complainant. We like to talk to witnesses. We like to talk to everybody to do a full investigation. And if you take that one piece out, it makes it more difficult. Not saying it's impossible. It's just a, I don't know, an incomplete investigation at times potentially.
That seems to me the supports that are suggested in number 10 kind of tie into this one as well. And that maybe we can see if there's a little more, a better understanding we could come to as to how a complainant can be supported through the process. And if that might address the, I think, the concern that gives rise to number 12. I think it warrants further discussion.
Yeah, I think it warrants further discussion. I certainly hear the city manager's concern about the, the potential inability to do a really complete investigation. The addition, though, in the last number of years of body cams does, I think, allow us potentially to get information even without the victim, alleged victim making that objection. So I would say it's worth some discussion at this point.
I think we need to hear them, you know, I really would like to hear exactly what they, they meant by that. Just like more information about this.
Yep. We can, if we schedule this for a work session, we can provide the full report again to you that has some more analysis and I think that would help.
I think, I think, actually, I didn't think of this, Jeff, when we were looking through these, but I think there's implications for the police officers bill of rights too and how it defines complaint. So I'm going to need to look at that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe we start with the legal review and then move it to a work session? Okay. All right, the last one from the CPRB is extending the statute of limitations to file a complaint from the current 90 days to 180 days. And we do not object to that recommendation.
I think that is notable.
I agree.
Okay, that probably, I didn't make this clear, but that, Eleanor, I believe would be an ordinance change. So we can, we can lump that into the ordinance change. So you see, we've got, we've got kind of three tiers here. We have legal review, we have work session, we have ordinance change. The legal review may, may take some time. Obviously, you know, you've got busy work sessions. So I'm going to suggest that we can move forward with kind of a first round of ordinance changes for the items that you were comfortable with. And then after legal review and after work session, maybe we do a second round of ordinance changes as needed later in the year. Is that, so expect kind of two changes to the CPRB ordinance and potentially in '21? Does that sound okay?
Sounds very good.
Okay. Be comfortable moving to the O-I-R recommendations? All right, we have a lot more here. There's 39 recommendations here as staff reviews these. And again, these, these recommendations are to you, not to us. But as we review these, we think there's considerable overlap in a lot of these recommendations. So that's why you see here oftentimes reference to another recommendation there. In these cases, I don't believe there's any that, that require legal review. This is more going to be council action or staff action types of discussions. To remind you of the, kind of the color coding we used here, all the CPRBs were green, which is, we need some guidance now to get started, and you just provided that. With these, we think there's a number of items that staff can initiate and bring to you or that staff can just go ahead and accomplish and report back to you on over time. So you'll, you'll see fewer greens in here. But please know if there's anything that's not green that you want to discuss first, that that's your purview to do that, and we're happy to, we're happy to facilitate that. So the first couple deal with mutual aid agreements with outside agencies and both local and Iowa State Patrol. We think in order, in order to really update those, those mutual aid agreements, we have to, we have to kind of know where things stand with, with a couple of our general orders, and that's our use of force and all hazards general orders. So those are the general orders that generally describe how we would respond to crowd control incidents for the topic that we're discussing. And what staff is suggesting is that we redraft those orders with some recommendations on changes. We provide those to council. And as a reminder, those also always go to the, all general order changes go to the CPRB too. But once we know kind of the rules of engagement for our police department, then we can really go out and work on those mutual aids. I think it'd be premature to go out and, and start working on mutual aid agreements when we don't exactly know what final decisions you all may make on those, on those general orders. So that's why we're saying we need your action, but not quite yet. We'd like to present you with some recommendations for changes and allow you to, to make any changes yourself before engaging those law enforcement agencies.
That makes sense.
Okay. This item three is one of them that we would like some guidance on before we get started. And this speaks directly to pedestrian activity on. And this speaks directly to pedestrian activity on the interstate. So the recommendation is that we need to evaluate. How do we respond to pedestrian activity on the interstate? And this gets at mutual aid, but but also just our own, our own staff too. And I think we need to think of this holistically because we we have situations in which you might have protesters trying to access the interstate. But we do also get instances where you might have individuals that for one reason or another are trying to access the interstates. We just have to be careful and really think holistically about how we how we draft these policies. But we're going to need some counsel guidance on that. That's a tough discussion that I think you all are going to have to have. But we need some guidance on on how you want your police department to respond when we do have people trying to access the interstate. And and one of the tricky things here is we don't unilaterally have the ability to shut down the interstate. It's not not our jurisdiction. So we kind of have to keep that in mind. I don't expect you to have that discussion now. That's a, that's a, that's a tough detailed discussion that you need to have. But that's going to be important for us as we update our orders and and start to speak to our law enforcement counterparts about changes to approaches.
Jeff, I know you mentioned that you didn't think a lot of these needed legal review, but I just wanted to ask other counselors. I would find it helpful if we have some some pretty deep First Amendment analysis relating to protester activity. I mean, and maybe even just some superficial analysis relating to that. But I think from my experience over the summer, I think there was a pretty wide understanding that all or many of the activities that took place would have been protected under current law and, you know, I just think us having a really good handle on where that stands in the context of choices we would want to make for what we what we might allow that that we could craft more specifically would be helpful. But I don't know what other counselors think about that.
I think that's a good point because I think, you know, there's there's the First Amendment and the free speech, but that doesn't mean you can do anything, anywhere, anytime that you want. So for those of us that are not constitutional scholars, which includes all of us, would, I think, be really helpful to have that better delineated before we try and get into that discussion. Because there are lines that people cross that they they say and think are free speech, but by preventing them from doing it, you're really not preventing free speech. So I think we need a better understanding of those lines.
Yeah, we have just, I mean, we, I'm sorry, Pauline.
It's okay, go ahead. I was going to say, and you can probably reflect on this, Eleanor, is I think it 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 kind of would frame a lot of the discussion on a lot of these items as far as the First Amendment rights and how it relates to protesters.
Yeah, it does. For instance, I think later on in this list is, you know, I mean, I think everybody would agree that force against a peaceful protester is not appropriate. Or the big question becomes, and how does one define that, particularly when you have a group of people as opposed to individuals, et cetera. There's been, we've already started to to dive into that stuff. There were some court decisions when injunctions were sought against police departments around the country that that we've been looking at, that I think can provide some guidance. So I I think I think you're right.
I mean, I think there's also at least one piece of legislation that's been working its way through the Iowa Legislature. No idea at this point if the governor is going to sign it. No idea how legal it is, but I think we need to wrap that in as well when we're looking at it.
And also, Eleanor, are there legalities as far as the state and the DOT and actually shutting down the interstate that would also, this would also involve that?
I think it's pretty clear that the state has jurisdiction over the over the interstate.
How many times has the interstate actually been closed as a result of demonstrations or protest activity?
In in my tenure, John, about 10 years with the city, we've had two and both referenced in the OIR report. We had the instance shortly after the 2016 presidential election when we had last summer.
I don't, those are the only two I recall in 25 years.
You know, I just, my thoughts on this, as I was reading through them, was that, you know, as a prelude to going out onto the interstate, you know, I would certainly hope, and it gets into some of the other recommendations, that there be further negotiation among among the community in terms of the value of of, you know, heading toward the interstate. On the other hand, I mean, as as the report noted, if it's a choice between using munitions on our members of our community and shutting down the interstate, I think, you know, we thus far, we've landed on shutting down the interstate.
Yeah, that's the easy question, John.
Yeah.
Because we can't shut it down.
Right. But yeah, again, I I would hope this situation could be avoided in the future. Would, you know, would be one of my responses, but yeah, anyway, those were some of my preliminary thoughts.
Yeah, they're clear, there clearly are techniques that, I mean, that can can be used to to help the situation.
Yeah, we just, I really agree with John, but we really need to know those techniques, Eleanor. If we can have more information on those techniques, so we can come up with a decision about that.
Yeah, you know, a lot of it is it it it's kind of what, you know, what we're prepared for. You know, in 2016, we didn't have extra staff and, you know, we didn't expect anything with with that with that protest. It was a gathering on the Pinnacle Crest that that, you know, decided to to head towards the interstate. We just weren't equipped to even get in front of the the group and and try to make that make that stop. You know, at the the summer's protest after the after the first night on on June 3 of access to the interstate, we obviously had had more people and we were more prepared with with concrete barriers to to, you know, set on the roadway to create a physical barrier. So a lot of it's just going to be in the nature. Is it spontaneous? Is it planned? Is it, you know, every situation is going to be quite a bit different, but we always have to anticipate that there's going to be another time in which it's spontaneous and we don't have the public work staff on call with 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 concrete barriers. We don't have enough police staff to to effectively control a crowd and prevent them from getting on the interstate like happened in in 2016. So that's the tricky part of all this is is that each each night, each day is going to be unique, each circumstance is going to be unique and probably going to have a slightly different response because because of that.
Yeah, I mean, you'll see when I give you the First Amendment analysis, there are no, I mean, it is a murky, messy decision-making and 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 it becomes even murkier and messier when you're trying to make decisions ahead of time without knowing all the facts. So we just have to do our best.
Well, we'll provide, we'll provide some legal review from from the city attorney's office and then we'll jump into some discussions that you can, you can inform us on on some policy drafting. If we're okay moving to number four, this is the one recommendation that that staff recommends dismissing. I believe that was the only one in this group. This is a recommendation that we dedicate additional resources to gathering information from social media about community sentiment and activism and protest activity. We have, we have a lot of protest activity in Iowa City and we support that. I really don't think we need our our police staff, you know, dedicated to monitoring social media every time we have a group that wants to gather on the ped mall or the Pinnacle Crest. I just don't think, I I'm not comfortable with that. I know our our police department wasn't comfortable with that. If if things take a turn and there's, you know, there's property damage or there's other criminal activity or something like that, then we can dedicate resources to trying to prevent and stop that. But just as a rule of thumb to 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 be engaged in trying to monitor that while it could help with our preparations, we're just uncomfortable with that scenario.
Thank you for that. I'm grateful to see that one not included.
Okay. More proactive outreach to protest leadership. This will be addressed in our redrafted general orders. We'll make that expectation clear in those general orders. And there's several other recommendations that speak to this one, too. Number six is is tied to that and and it's using crisis negotiation trained personnel to help in those negotiations and outreach to protest leadership prior to deployment of force. I think all our officers have a good baseline with their crisis intervention training. But but our department is actively pursuing some specialty training on on protest communications so that we can deploy those. I think, given what happened across the the country this this summer, there's this past summer, there's there's going to be definitely an emphasis on this. And we'll pursue those training opportunities and and try to have folks that are kind of specialized in 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 this type of outreach. So no counsel action needed there. The next one is gets at crowd control policies. Again, this is pretty much the same recommendation restated. And we'll we'll draft, we'll address that with the with the general orders that the CPRB and you will eventually see. Eight, again, same as same as before. This just gets at specialty training to to work directly with protest groups. And as I mentioned, we're pursuing that. Number nine is those physical barriers we talked about just a little bit ago. And obviously, after June 3, we were able to use those in most of the instances that that followed where we had marches to the interstate. So we did have some positive experience with this with this effort. And you know, that's not the police department, you know, taking out those barriers. That's that's our public work staff that we had on overtime in those days following June 3 to help take those barriers around, emergency management that the county was very involved as well. And we're, you know, we're actively working to make sure that we can spin those types of operations up quickly if needed. Okay. 10 through 13, and if we want to go through them individually, we can, but what's left on this this page here is all items that we believe need to be addressed in our in our general orders. And and again, we suggest that staff present you with some recommendations and allow you and the CPRB to review those. We will also with 13, that that gets a little bit more at communication techniques. As you know, we'll have a public safety specialist in our communications operation here shortly with the new budget that that you authorized. And and certainly that position will will be dedicated in part to investigating these techniques as well. And then the police department is is actively procuring additional sound amplification systems so that warnings can be more clearly heard by larger groups of individuals as recommended in this report.
Yeah, I I would just add to that, that after watching the videotape, it seemed that some sort of visual messaging might be considered as well because there was so much just ambient noise that, you know, the any kind of audio, audio form of communication didn't, it'd be hard to imagine it working in and of itself effectively. But in any event, yeah, that clearly was a breakdown. It was, it was obvious that no one heard the announcements.
I do like the idea. Go right ahead, please.
Oh, sorry. No, I was gonna say, I like that idea, John, because I hadn't thought of something like that. But definitely when I listened to those, watched, listened to those body cam videos too. When you listen to people who gave the orders or were near them, it was very audible. But when you listen to the ones near the front line, it was not very audible at all. So that idea of a visual along with an audible warning could potentially be very beneficial. I don't, I don't know what other areas do, but that'd be worth investigating.
I really agree with John because also for me, when I listen to you, I guess still today, I believe that the protesters never hear that they're going to be tiered guided. You know, because you can hear it in the middle of the crowd, police crowd, but nothing was in the front. So we need to really improve that.
I think we, and I agree with everything that's been said. I would say we also have to realize that, you know, the people beyond the front lines will not potentially be able to hear. And so unless there is something that is going to be pre-planned and set up throughout, which, you know, could be knocked over, whatever the case may be, but I I think the reality is, is that the front line, just the first first few lines will be able to see, which would be great. Unless you get it way up there, tall and high. And only the first few will be able to hear.
Yes, we can be creative somehow.
And that's really what what this is asking for is just really try to be comprehensive in thought. We'll look at the visual. I I haven't seen anything like that, but I'm I'm guessing that we're not the first one to ask if there's some good visual cues that that can be adopted as well.
Just checking, Jeff, I haven't heard any of those or seen any of those either, but I think it is a a pretty good idea. I'm sure there's something, whether it be something like what the DOT uses on the freeways or something like that. I think that's a, that's a, it's a great idea.
And it seems to me this doesn't necessarily have to be a police-specific piece of equipment. I mean, if we're just talking about being able to get a message that can be seen and heard by a crowd, there there, you know, it doesn't seem to me that that has to be a a police piece of equipment. And we may have other uses in the, you know, parks and rec department or communications for for something that can communicate to crowds anyway.
Right. I was thinking it could even be as much as like a bandleader stand that they stand, you know, up there, up above the crowd and and be heard better or seen better, something of that nature.
Okay. 14 is is territory we just, we just covered there. Again, clarity and communication, real-time social media, et cetera. We should review body camera footage after critical incidents, identify any remarks that are inconsistent with department expectations. This is, this is standard operating procedure for us. I think where where the confusion is on this one is that that internal investigation wasn't done after June 3. That's when we opted for that third-party investigation. But but we don't, we do this routinely already as part of our, as part of our existing general order process. So no further action is needed on on that one for us. Number 16 is a call for us to go back and review individual use of forces from the June 3 event. And the police chief has already initiated that process internally, so that this one is already underway. Okay, 17 and 18 are the next two. 17 gets at the miscommunication that occurred between the police department and and fire and ambulance on the night of June 3. There was a a debriefing in the days and weeks following the June 3 event and staff feels very comfortable that those, you know, that that debriefing was successful and and that those issues have been satisfied. And we're certainly keen and aware of that situation, but But we don't feel like there's anything else that's needed. That was, that was already accomplished. 18 gets at uniform identification for officers in tactical gear. And we concur with this recommendation and and the chief and captains are pursuing officer identification on those tactical uniforms.
I'm really glad to see this. I think this past summer, we saw some really disturbing video and heard a lot of disturbing stuff, I think particularly out of Portland of people being picked up off the street with people who nobody could identify what law enforcement agency they were with, or if they were even with a law enforcement agency. And so regardless of how difficult or chaotic the situation, I think it is really important that members of the public can identify the law enforcement agencies and individual identification of those officers as well. So I'm glad to see this.
Yeah, I agree. The only place that I've been where, you know, that Portland, what we were seeing in Portland sort of reminded me of some countries I've served in where there's just, there's no accountability and you can't. And there's no way to figure out what happened to whom. I think this is a really important step.
Okay, 19 gets at disorderly conduct that takes place. And and again, we think that this this will need to be addressed in the in the updated general order that we plan to bring back to you and CPRB. Parameters for use of force and deployment of munitions in the context of protest activity. Again, there's a lot of overlap here. This is what our general orders would would get at. We do want to continue to reiterate that, you know, whatever procedures are adopted are are content neutral, right? I mean, it doesn't matter what you're protesting, your rights are the same. And so we have to, we have to keep that in mind when the time comes to review these general orders. 21 and 22, we put in those same same categories, too, actually 23 as well. We can go through them individually, but our feeling is that the general orders will cover those and we'll get into those discussions. A policy, the 24 is a policy manual on its website with a searchable function. We already have all our general orders on the website, but they're they're not searchable in the context that that OIR is is requiring or is suggesting. You can download a PDF and if you have the right software, you can search within there. But we're going to look at some outside vendors that can assist with this. Are we current, we currently don't have the capability to do this with our our current content management system on our website. So we've got a couple of opportunities, either a third party vendor that can provide this type of service. Or as we go through our website redesign, that's in an RFP stage right now. If there's a content management system that can accomplish this without a third party system, we'll go that route, too.
Do you know where we are in the process or what is the timeframe for that website redesign? I know Counselor Burgess, this is one of your, one of your pet peeves.
Yeah, so we, as a reminder, the current website was designed in partnership with the University of Iowa. We kind of piggybacked onto their content management system. We have an RFP that's on the street right now. It's a request for proposals. So we basically said, we're going to be redesigning our site. If you are a website designer that has municipal experience, submit your proposals to us. Those proposals are probably due in April or May. I don't know the exact date. And then, you know, well, our hope was to select one by the start of the fiscal year, which is when the budgeted funds are available to actually conduct the work. So that's a long process. You know, I'd like to think we can accomplish it next fiscal year. But but it's probably, we're probably 12 months out, if I had to guess.
I think at least for me, I'm comfortable knowing that we'll be having a website redesign. And and making sure we ask if that's something that they that they can do within within their process. If not, then, you know, having a another third party assess would be appropriate.
Yeah, I think what the chief will go through is this process of saying, what other, what other value adds can a third party bring to it? If it's just a searchable function, then hopefully we can accomplish that through the content management system that we acquire. But but there may be some other advantages to working with the third party and that's something we'll just have to evaluate over the next couple of months.
Sounds good.
Okay, 25 is another general order update. This gets at the annual training curriculum and and actually crowd control training and being more diligent about how frequent we are with with that level of training. We certainly agree with that and will include that. Staff is already pursuing updates to the tactics manual. So we will update those accordingly. I don't believe there's any council action needed there. And 27 gets at the same thing. It's it's not just Iowa City PD training, but is there metro or regional training on crowd control that can be pursued? And of course, that makes a lot of sense, too, and and we'll try to accomplish that. That speaks at 28 as well. 29 gets at looking at case law and best practices related to protest activity, crowd, crowd management. And we'll certainly do that. We can do that through our our network of other departments. But there's also some good independent literature out there from non-police agencies on on crowd control as well. And we'll consult all those sources when when looking at our policies and procedures.
Just a question about this group that talks about best practices and crowd control. I mean, what's, can you articulate sort of based on the direction of the council that we've given so far? Like, how, how do we know what best practices are? Whose best practices are we adopting? Like, I have some discomfort with the, you know, just the generic idea of best practices based on what we saw from departments across the country over the summer. That I'm sure there are some cities that thought what they were doing was was reasonable, and obviously that would not be acceptable here.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very fair point. And, you know, maybe the term best practices wasn't wasn't the best choice. I think, I think the intent, as we see the intent here, best practices was was certainly OIR's wording. But lessons learned, new strategies, new adaptations. I think there's, there's already a lot of school of thought on on these, you know, based on last summer. So we'll certainly look, look out there to see if there was departments that had success, you know, in other ways. But I think from from our standpoint, we're wide open. And and whether that's trying something completely new, that's kind of authored after last summer, I think we're open to that. The bottom line is, we need to, we need to kind of cast the net out there to see what the school of thought is post 2020 on on crowd control and make sure that we're doing everything we can to honor the councils and communities' expectations.
Many of the other agencies across the country are going through the same problem right now. A lot of different agencies learning some hard lessons over the summer, including my former agency. So I think best practices are probably changing as we speak. So as Jeff said, I do think we need to cast a wide net and and with your count, with your guidance as a council, decide what we think the best practice is not.
Yeah, I'm seeing a lot of that, too. I mean, I'll give you an example. Like, one of the things we've looked at is a report by NYU School of Law called Policing Protests to Protect Constitutional Rights and Public Safety. That was done in October of 2020. So there's, there's a fair amount of literature, I think, that we can look to that uses the 2020 BLM protests as a learning tool.
Okay, moving on, we have the final set of recommendations, the final page. You'll see a lot of white on this page, which is us, again, basically saying, we don't think any council actions needed, but by all means, jump in and redirect if appropriate. The 30 gets at the incident command structure and, you know, making sure that we have the training in place that's needed to fully implement an ICS. Chief Liston's already initiated refresher training on incident command and we'll continue to do that. That'll be an ongoing emphasis in the department. That's also is, I think, 31, we believe is the same action there. Establishing generic crowd management plan templates, templates in advance of protest activity may be helpful was the OIR recommendation. Candidly, we, we kind of doubt that this will help much because our experience is that every protest is is very unique in its own way. And there's some danger, I think, in relying on a template and not, you know, not kind of tying the hands of your of your department to respond to maybe some unique circumstances that they see if they feel like they're tied to a template. But we understand, I think, at a more general level, what they're trying to get at here, and it's really preparation. So, you know, some templates, I think we can develop some very general templates, but we certainly want to maintain the ability for our our command staff to to use their discretion during during future events. So we'll pursue this, but just want to let you know we're a little, little lukewarm on that. We're not going to put a whole lot of stock in into into those templates.
I just want to raise the issue again of the, of the, of the state legislature and as again, at least one of the laws that I think is going to go to the governor's desk if it's not already, that we'll have to factor that in here, unfortunately.
Yeah, the appreciate that. We'll have to, that'll be an ongoing evaluation there. 33 is, and 34 are both incident command. The, you know, command post location was criticized in the OIR report. And and we agree that, you know, there was, there were some problems with that command post location. And there may be some other other unique, you know, other facilities. We did have, I think, normally in a case like this, you know, a facility like JEC could work really well for a command post location. But keep in mind that that was also the COVID command post site. So there were other, you know, as I said before, there's always unique complicating factors. And and in hindsight, maybe there was a better location. We'll, we'll give that some thought so that we have several different sites identified. 35 is the tactical channel for communication. These capabilities already exist and no actions required there. You know, with 34 and 35, you can see in our our comments, at times we felt some of the recommendations from OIR were really well suited for very large departments with lots of personnel. We are still a relatively small department, particularly when you have an activity that has hundreds of people on the street. And so we don't always have the depth of supervisory personnel on on staff at any given time when it comes to making sure that you've got the right people out at on the streets and the right people in command post. At times, you know, we're still a small department and we're going to struggle with that. But but we do understand what they're, what they're saying here. We'll certainly work to make sure the right people are in the right locations. 36 gets at tactical communications. And again, we, we concur that one-on-one communications is ideal. Circumstances often dictate when that's possible and when it's not. 37 gets in that same kind of, how are you communicating with officers on a tactical level? All that's being evaluated right now. We're exploring some alternative communication capabilities there as well. I think we made the best, you know, we may do with what we had and made the best of what we had last year. The, you know, the command number 38 is, is again, just who's involved in that command poster in that incident command system. And and OIR's points are well taken. And frankly, we acted on those in the days following in June 3. So it's really getting at who else needs to be at the table when you're managing events like that, bringing in fire, bringing in ambulance, those, those types of agencies as well. And that was done after June 3. And then 39 is the communication specialist position. You have already authorized the budget. We're going, it's a new position and new positions require specific council action to create as well. So in the, in the coming month, we'll probably bring you, you know, a request to authorize that position, which will allow us to go out and advertise and fill that position. So you don't need to do anything now, but you will eventually in a formal meeting have to vote on the creation of that position, even though you've dedicated the funds to it already.
Jeff, is that the position that is in your office?
Correct. So that'll be a public safety communications position that's housed in our centralized communication office, which is part of the city manager's office. And they will serve both police and fire.
Well, thank you for that, Jeff. Any other questions for Jeff on on OIR? All right, so it's about five minutes till six. Wondering how council is feeling. Do we want to take a little break, like five, 10 minutes? And come back and continue with police? Plenary plan or what are, what are thoughts?
15 minutes to six, Meyer. Not five.
It's 15 minutes till six. Thank you.
Certainly wouldn't mind doing the, the draft on another work session, but the and just leave it here for now. For me, there's only so much of this that I personally can go through before I start zoning out, I think, a little bit.
I have to agree with John. I think that we went through a lot of intense information pretty quickly. We know that it's very important to all of us. And certainly I don't want to, my physical body to, you know, react to the information. I want, I want to make sure that I'm at my best. So do, is there consensus that we can maybe create another work session to talk about the police restructuring?
I would go along with that because I think it demands our full attention.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's fine. I think, given the number of ones that the staff feels we don't need to act on, that they're either already doing things on or they combine. I think it'll be fairly, fairly quick discussion, although certain items might take a lot more time. But I'm fine with putting it off to another meeting.
I'd just like to schedule that so we know when, when that's happening and not lose track of it.
Yeah, that's where my mind went. And I was trying to think about our work sessions coming up. If it could be in a regular work session. I, what we'll do is we'll, we'll meet tomorrow and maybe we can bring it back at our next work session, just to update the council.
But Jeff, can you give us a date about the the public feedback on the restructuring of the police?
Yeah, so just as a reminder, the, after initially discussing the report in January or February this year, council asked for some more public feedback. I've reached out to Council asked for some more uh public feedback. Um, I've reached out to a couple of folks in the community that I think could. Help us um do a little deeper dive into into the community a little bit, so. I've got uh, I've got some folks that I I believe will be willing to contract with us uh to to do that work. Um, the early feedback that I've gotten is that it would be really helpful to. Um, or really beneficial to have some in-person meetings uh to to help with this feedback, and that if we're just relying on. Electronic means that it it's not going to be as robust as as maybe we want it to be. Uh, so I I think we're optimistic that we could launch something in, you know, maybe May, June, July. And and allow for some more in-person meetings and then get you that feedback later uh in the summer. Um, and you know, that's a tricky thing with this because I I don't want to presume that everybody's comfortable moving ahead. But I also don't want to lose time as well, especially when we're talking about alternative response models with expanding mobile crisis and. In in, you know, 911 integration. Tho- those tasks are going to take some time, and I I really, I want to, I want to have those discussions with with community partners with other governments. And so that's that's kind of that balance I'm looking to get from council. This, this is a little bit different than the last two sets of recommendations that you went through because. You're going to have to give us some guidance on. W- what what can you go ahead and do, staff, and what do we really need to wait for more public input on? And and I and I want to respect, you know, your your guidance on that, so. Um, I'll work with the mayor and uh Mayor Pro Tem, and and we'll try to get this scheduled at one of our regular work sessions coming up and. We'll go, we'll go from there.
I I would just ask if other counselors are willing to maybe frame up that conversation with a more general, like, big picture. Conversation or lead into it about like where we think we're headed and shared values and just kind of that. Sort of strategic planning element that we've touched on a couple of times in our work sessions, but for example. Like, the definition of policing and this conversation that we had in the budgeting process about, okay, so things like animal control and. Crossing guards are within policing. Is that really how we want it to be? And what does that mean? For the public when we're, you know, putting those under the umbrella of policing? Um, if we can have that conversation, I think, leading in to give staff guidance on some of those. Urgent questions like Jeff was saying to not lose time on something like 911 integration. I would find that really helpful. I think it'd be helpful for the public. I don't know what other people think.
I I really think, yes, there is some item, we can't talk about it without hitting the public feedback. But I really think that we need to hear the public feedback before we can pursue in many, many items. So I just don't want to say, okay, staff, we comfortable about this. Staff moving forward, and after that, the public will come and have different feedback. Yeah, yeah, I understand that there is certain things that even, you know, is is just like. As you was talking about the animals, you know, and all this kind of things. Yes, there is certain stuff that we can talk about it. But I really don't want to, like, really, y- you know, hurry up and just start, you know, talking about this. This is historical change, and I think we are really doing something really good. Uh, we are making history here. And I I guess when I see that, we hear the public feedback. We put a lot money in translation, we hire people. And we're doing that, just like, take our time in certain stuff. We don't need to hurry up and do this. That's really my insight.
Any other comments?
Well, I'll just uh. In responding to Laura, I think, you know, what I've been trying to focus on, and I I haven't looked at the draft as deeply as I need to look at it, but I'm I'm. You know, there are certain, with respect to some of the things we just reviewed, there are certain things which seem to be kind of internal. Internally oriented in terms of the organization, say, of our police department. And its relationships to other entities, things of that sort, where I'm. You know, the not so concerned with hearing strongly from the community and the public. Where where there actually is that interface with the with the community and the public, it's. It's those recommendations that I'm most concerned with, and. You know, how, you know, if you were to ask, I mean, this 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 thing came out, um, you know, it's sort of a. A very full-blown set of resolutions. And I keep wanting to ask, you know, those of us who are really engaged in this, so. So what is it that really concerns you in terms of your everyday relationship with our police force? And and how can we improve that? And and so that's how I really want to try to look at the draft. But also, as has been mentioned, is there anything else there that we need to be considering that may not be in the draft? Uh, so that that's where I kind of am at the moment. But I'm glad we have two of these sets out of the way, so I can uh try to refocus back on on the one that's left.
I hear what you're saying, John. I also don't think this is going to be a closed process. And I think that we're going to look at whatever, you know, this set and anything else we bring into it and what the public comments on. And then other things are going to come up down the line that we're going to continue to want to examine.
I think it'll be with the new chief in place, Chief Liston, and and his impressions of these recommendations and his thoughts.
Well, I I think a couple of really important points have been brought up. I think, you know, John, you know, in terms of. Of what we want and how we interact with the public, and I think for a lot of us, it's not just how we interact with the public, but more importantly. How do the people of color in this community, um, what are their interactions and their perceptions and and their views and feelings and thoughts? Uh, in terms of interacting with the police department and law enforcement in general, and making sure that we're addressing those. In all the things that we're looking at and talking about. Uh, and Janice, as you're saying, this this is not a, this is not a dead end kind of thing. This is. This is a revolving door. We're going to keep going over this, and if if we do it right, it's something that we review continually. And, you know, as we get more public input, as circumstances change, we need to be, you know, reviewing this, you know, on an ongoing basis. Um, and from your comment, Laura, about kind of that bigger picture and how we look at that. I guess I'm not entirely sure what, did I understand where you're going with that, and we can have that conversation later. Uh, as well, but I think, you know, as we look at our overall values. I think quite frankly that all seven of us are on the same page. Uh, the public may not believe that, and the public may not agree with that, with a lot of the comments they make. But I truly believe that the seven of us want to have. Uh, a police department, and I believe our staff does, that are, we want to have a law enforcement department. That respects the public, treats people with respect, does not discriminate. Based on race, color, creed, sexual orientation, et cetera, whatever other, you know, uh. Qualifications or or discriminations that you might have. And we want to make sure that happens. And so I think as we go through these things that we looked at today. In terms of whether it's additional training, um, outside. Auditing, et cetera, um, changes in general orders. I believe, I know that's what's in my mind and what's in my heart. And I believe absolutely 100% that that is what is in the minds and hearts of our entire council. I think a lot of people don't believe that, and I think the reason they don't believe that is because. They don't necessarily agree with our approach. Um, so I think we can have the same goal in the end. I think we can have different approaches along that process. And what I, what I do find discouraging lately is the um. Almost hateful speech that we are getting in our city council meetings. Um, and in the TRC meetings. Um, simply because people do not believe in the same approach, so they want to. They want to, they want to tell the people how we feel and how we think. Simply because they do not agree with our approach. And I will push back on that today, and I will push back on that in every future meeting. And if necessarily necessary, I will start pushing back on that in media posts. That do not try to tell the public what we believe and what we feel. Simply because you do not agree with our approach. And I think all of us need to keep reinforcing that, because I do truly believe that all seven of us. Have the same feeling about what we need to have out of our law enforcement. And what we need to have out of all of our staff as they interact with the public. Even though we don't necessarily all agree on the approach. I'll leave it there.
Need any other comments? No. Well, I have to say, uh, Council members, thank you for the word, those words. I think, and I'll leave it here, I think that um. Was being said is not, sometimes we didn't even, for the for the police. Preliminary uh plan to restructure the police. The only person that spoke about their position in December was John Thomas. Um, and I believe everyone else said, we're going to wait to have a discussion. But then people began to define our positions when we haven't even shared them. So I think to the public, again, I, it is very, it's very important that we really do work together. This is not against. This is, this should not be about council against the public. This is our city. We can work together. We really can. And so I do urge all the individuals that come to the council, please consider. Um, that we are not here to be against you. We are here to work for the people of Iowa City. Very hard decisions. This keeps me up at night. It 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 keeps a lot of us up at night, but we're we're going to get through it as a community, and I, again, thank. Thank all of the council. Thanks the pub, thank the public for your input as well as very important.
I would like to add to what Counselor Mem said, and uh thank those people, those members of the public who have been supportive of us. And have sent uh spoken up or sent uh emails, positive emails. I would like to thank them.
If there's nothing else for today, we will adjourn. And we will be back on, oh, wait, two weeks from now. Because we have a fifth week this month, so. All right, we'll see you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, well, everybody. Bye.
Good night. Have a good night.